Good evening and welcome to this evening's regular meeting of the Westerville Board of Education, and I'd like to ask the Treasurer to please call the roll.
Mr. Byrd?
Here.
Mrs. Davidson?
Here.
Dr. French?
Here.
Mr. Velardo?
Here.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Here, thank you. Would you please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Moving on to item three on the agenda. Item three is discussion and approval of minutes, and this is in regards to the minutes of the August 25th, 2014 board meeting. And we do not move and second and vote on these minutes, but I do ask the board members if they have any comments, questions, corrections to make. Anyone have anything they'd like to say about the minutes?
Good job.
I do not hear any questions or corrections, so we'll move on to item four on the agenda, district highlights and recognitions. We have none this evening. We'll move on to item five, reports, and we do have two reports tonight, one staffing summary and the other resident educator update. So you can see both of those are concerned with our staffing at this point in time as we kick off another school year, and I'm going to turn this over to the Superintendent and let him turn it over to whomever he pleases, Gary.
Thank you, President Nestor Baker. It's my pleasure to bring Gary Smitscher to the podium to provide a staffing summary. One of the things we would like to do as we move forward is keep the board engaged in various dimensions of our work. If you remember, in strategic planning, one of the areas we looked at was human resource capacity, and so this is part of our effort to keep the board and the community updated around how we're doing in terms of our staffing and what we're doing to prepare them. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Smitscher.
Thank you. With that said, I would like to draw your attention to a couple of things tonight. One is review the staffing for this school year for licensed staff members, and also share with you some changes in STRS and some things that we're going to do to look at the significant changes that will occur next year in 2015. Dr. Kellogg referenced your dimension three and the strategic plan. Student learning is driven by recruiting, developing, and retaining highly effective and skilled staff members. And I know many of the administrators in the school district were trained in the Ventures for Excellence interviewing process, and this aligns so well with that process. Whoever took the time to develop this should be congratulated because it's well stated. It has a student focus to it, talks about student learning, student achievement, student growth. It talks about fit, which I think is something that I'm always looking at. How does this first person fit into the school district? How do they fit into the building? How do they fit into the grade level that we're looking at and considering this person for? So with that said, this school year, we have hired 66 licensed staff members, which equals an FTE of 62.2. On this page of the presentation is a breakdown of the current staff members by education. You can see the bachelors, 17, all the way up through MA plus 30. In this screen, experience, we have, again, 66 people. Forty-four of them are zero to two, 14 are three to five, one six to 10, and then there were seven beyond 10 years' experience. Please keep in mind that with our negotiated agreement, we are limited to granting five years' experience on the salary schedule, so when you look at a person who has 10-plus years, we are granting a maximum of five years to those folks. As we go through the, oh, excuse me, one more that I'd like to show. This is the breakdown by grade level, elementary, middle school, and high school. And again, the 66 staff members, FTE of 62.2. As we get into the hiring season and looking at next year, the STRS requirements will change. Basically, in the past, for a long period of time, you could retire with 30 years' experience at any age, 25 years' experience at age 55, five years' experience if you were age 60. Those are going to change and be modified, and that's one of the things that we're going to have to take into consideration as we look at staffing and the hiring process for next year. We have broken down our projections for next year. We have identified about 152 people, licensed staff members, that could retire next year based on the criteria established by STRS, and you'll see on the next several pages that we have broken that down. For example, in grades one to five, we have a potential of 35 retirees who could leave the district next year. And so as we look at each of these areas of certification, this will help us identify potential area of needs. Will all 152 people leave the district? Probably not, but this will give us a guide to help us as we look at recruiting and interviewing and planning for the following school year. Potential of nine social studies teachers, and someone told me today that could be all football coaches. So, but again, this is a preliminary guide for us. At this point, we have identified the maximum of 152 if everybody did retire, and it's interesting, a lot of these folks are not in that 30-plus category. A lot of them are in that 25, age 55 category. Plus, the other thing we don't know at this point, how many people plan to buy years and then retire? I mean, we could be looking at an employee that has 27 years. Okay, they're not age appropriate yet, so they can't retire, but they later tell us that they've purchased four years and they're going to go ahead and retire. So that's one of the unknowns in this scenario of projecting out for next year. Questions?
Questions?
To ask a question, really, we have a lot of unknowns at this point, so, you know, we could have 50 retire, we could have, you know, 200 actually if everybody buys some years, but the best scenario is that you continue to do what you're doing well and selecting the best people.
One thing I should also share, Bart, Rhonda, and myself have had discussion, and we have scheduled a night to host STRS representative, October the 18th.
November 18.
November, excuse me, November 18th. We're going to have that at Central High School from 4:00 to 6:30, and we will invite everybody. In fact, they want to bring their spouse, that's great. They want to bring their financial advisor, that's fine. That will probably give us a better idea of at least who's contemplating it and who's looking for information.
Just, this projection is based on who could retire based on the changes to STRS?
Right.
Okay. I'm just getting that in my own head. And interesting, is this, is it, I'm just curious, is it normal that there would be a much larger number of potential retirees in the elementary grades than in higher grades? Or is that just how it played out here?
That varies.
Okay. I was just curious. I thought, well, that's just interesting.
That's really hard to say.
Okay.
Based on the demographics of your staff, you could have a lot of elementary people eligible. The next year, you could have more high school people, just really based on the demographics and makeup of your staff.
And that's what I was wondering, is that a normal thing? Maybe they're skewed a little bit older, more mature is what we'd call them, but...
Experienced.
Seasoned, seasoned, yes.
Seasoned veterans.
I was just curious. That's just really a pretty interesting bump at grades one to five compared to all the other ones.
Exactly.
Thank you. Just curious.
So I would ask, is the impact going to be greater at some schools versus others? Do you know that?
Again, it could be based on the demographics. I know in one of the committees I was involved in last week, the teacher was telling me that there could be three science teachers at that high school retire at the end of the year. So it just really varies based on, like I said, staff demographics. We're trying to plan for it, we're trying to anticipate the best we can, and this will help us determine where we need to look for potential staff members. And as I said in the update the other day on Friday, we have started to build relationships with colleges and universities, and we had a representative from Otterbyne in Friday. Lori and I are going to Otterbyne October the 6th and back on December the 1st, and we're trying to build some relationships, and hopefully it'll benefit both of us. Also, I would like to introduce Lori Lofton, who's in the HR office this year. Lori has joined us from ODE. I tell her that we saved her. But I also told her when we were leaving a meeting the other night, I said, Lori, I'm glad you're on my team. So she's been real positive and stepped into HR and really been a huge plus for us, and so Lori, thank you.
I would just like to say, I think it's great that you're having the STRS meeting in November because you may know a lot more by the end of December in terms of what your needs, what our needs will be, and maybe you could come back, you know, briefly and just fill us in in January or something, because by then, some people will declare, I think, after that meeting, so thank you.
Don't leave.
Yeah, Gary, if I...
You're not done. Put your book down.
I got a question for you. It may be helpful, you know, so I've been tracking this and looking at this, and when you look at the way that the eligibility requirements are changing over time, I think from a pure statistical analysis standpoint, your reference to the 25s at 55s, those folks that are not in the 30-year category but are looking at the any age component of this, might be helpful for us to see some of the numbers as to what that distribution looks like.
I can do that for you and maybe include that in the update on Friday.
Yeah, that'd be great, because I think there's, to me, that seems like the most logical group of folks that we'd, you know, we should rightly be concerned about from losing from a tenure and experience standpoint.
I know when I looked at that, it kind of caught me off-guard a little bit because you typically 30-plus, and we had a lot in that category, but I can send that to you in the update on Friday.
Great. Thank you.
I'm going a little different direction with my questions. You still can't leave.
Okay.
I'm going away from the retirement piece, although I do have a little bit to talk about that. I have just a handful of questions. As you look, I really appreciate the slides that you provided that provide information on the levels of experience. One of the concerns that I have had is that I don't want to see us overloaded with individuals with little to no experience. We know very well, there's a very strong research base on the importance of a balance of experience within the staff, and also we know from a very strong research base on the amount of time and dollars that must be put into training and embedding, and we're going to hear more about that in the next presentation. But what I'm interested in and would ask that you go back and send us the information or provide it to us in public, is what does our experience look like across the entirety of the licensed staff? We see what our new hires look like, but what does that look like across the staffing overall, and then at the various levels, elementary, middle, and high? That has buried not only on what's happening now, but as we look at the potential for large numbers of retirements over the next year, and then after that, we'll need to be looking at what that exodus means as regards who we bring in, so that we can make sure that we have an appropriate balance for educational reasons and also for financial reasons as we move that bubble down the line. So I'm very interested in knowing about that experience level. Also interested in being kept up to date on what we're doing to increase the diversity of our teaching and administrative staff. That is a significant issue for us as it is for most districts, but as we think about building those relationships and the partnerships with the higher education institutions and other components that we can look at for diversity, I'd be really interested in your thoughts as you go forward on how we can improve the diversity of our staff.
Okay.
And then a specific question, 62.2 FTE, how much of that is replacement due to attrition or whatever, and how much of it is new?
Okay.
See why I told you not to leave?
No, that's okay. That's okay. Let me look those things up and I'll get the information back to you.
Okay.
Glad to.
Thank you very much.
And I'm going to tag onto that. I really am interested in that last item of how much is replacement and how much is new, also the 66 people. But I will also say that there's a lot of research that's been done that the beginners, the zero through two or three years of experience are a great asset to a district. Because they do bring eager new ideas and are, you know, excited about doing a great job for the district. So, you know, I will, you know, put a little punch in there for them too, so, because I see so much from some of our beginners who've had a year or two under their belt, and they're really, you know, sometimes the people that are out there helping us do what we want to do, so.
That's a good point.
That's just another punch from the other side.
Yeah, and I wouldn't want those 44 people in zero to two years to think that I'm saying they don't know what to do.
Right.
I'm just saying I'm looking for a balance, because just as they bring so much, so well seasoned individuals bring a great deal as well.
You know, we had a situation that occurred just, oh, maybe two weeks before school started at an elementary school, and the principal was looking at a veteran teacher, and I said, explain to me why this person's a good fit. Well, they have replaced that staff member or that position every other year for about three years in a fifth grade, and she was looking for some stability in fifth grade, and so we talked, and I said, understand. And so I told her periodically, I'm going to check with you to see how we're doing, so. So, yeah, I mean, it can't be one size fits all, and like I said, in your strategic plan, it said, well, talked about fit, talks about student focus and so forth, and that's what we're all about, finding those people that bring that to the table, whether they've got one year, two years, three years, no years, you just really have to look at the candidate, what they can bring to your school district, so. Okay?
That's good. I'm glad that's what we're doing.
So, one of the strategies attached to the strategic plan is developing the metrics, and this is the beginning part of looking at that. You mentioned diversity and all of those. If you go back to the key themes, which were community-driven, all of those pieces you were talking about are in there, and we're working now towards drilling that down even to building levels, looking at the differences in distribution across buildings and the needs, because, you know, there's one in here, the assignment of staff should be equitable and focused on student and school needs. So trying to develop metrics to guide us to meet the key themes that were a important part of the strategic planning, and Mr. Smitscher and his staff, and they're all new to this, are doing a great job building that, so we'll continue, and I appreciate them taking the time to pull that together tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next, Lisa's ready to go. Dr. Kellogg, is there anything you want to say before Lisa gets started?
This is, the resident educator program has been in place, I believe this, we're entering our...
Year four.
Year four. So this will be the first cohort that's gone through all four years, and Lisa's a resident expert at this and has done fabulous job. We're glad she's back to lead us through this as well. I know the teachers were excited, so I'm going to turn it over to her to present.
Thank you. Dr. Nestor Baker, members of the board, Dr. Kellogg, Mr. Griffith. I really appreciate the opportunity to share some information about the Ohio Resident Educator Program and how we're implementing it here in Westerville. A little bit of background, in 2009, legislation mandated a new licensure system for teachers, including an initial four-year resident educator license. The first resident educator licenses were issued in January of 2011. The four-year resident educator program was then initiated in August of 2011. It's an intensive four-year induction system that offers support and instructional guidance to accelerate new teacher effectiveness. New teachers face many challenges, including understanding district policies and school cultures, designing and delivering instruction, adapting to a variety of learning styles, motivating and assessing students, communicating with students, parents, and colleagues. The Ohio Resident Educator Program offers a formative assessment and mentoring support that will culminate in the completion of a statewide summative performance-based assessment. In 2003, the National Commission on Teaching in America's Future noted that teachers are not finished products when they complete a teacher preparation program. Conservatively, researchers estimate that the cost of replacing public school teachers who have dropped out of the profession to be over $12,500 per teacher, costly problems both for the students who lose the value of being taught by an experienced teacher and to schools and districts which must recruit their replacements. We know that teacher quality is the most important school-based factor affecting student learning. Numerous studies illustrate this impact. New teachers can be as effective as experienced teachers more quickly when new teachers participate in comprehensive induction programs, which can also improve the satisfaction and skills of the veteran teachers that they work with. Now, teachers learn by doing, reading, and reflecting, by collaborating with other teachers, by looking closely at students and their work, and then by sharing what they see. The Ohio Resident Educator Program is built upon the foundation of the Ohio Standards for the Teaching Profession and the Ohio Continuum of Teacher Development. The Ohio Resident Educator Program and the Ohio Teacher Evaluation System are components of Ohio's comprehensive professional growth system that leads educators from induction through lifelong learning and growth to advanced student achievement. As Westerville completes the pilot of the Ohio Teacher Evaluation System this year and fully implements OTAS next year, resident educators and mentors will have had the experience that is shared with the sheer components of self-assessment, goal-setting, formal and informal observation, evidence-based documentation, areas of refinement and reinforcement for professional growth. So while OTAS is a tool used for making licensure decisions, the Ohio Resident Educator Program is for the purpose of professional license decisions. Teachers who are working under a five-year license, most teachers, must complete six semester hours of coursework related to their license or 18 CEUs, continuing education units, and that's what they need to do in order to move from one five-year license to the next. Now, in the four-year resident educator program, these teachers don't earn CEUs, okay? Instead, they complete all the program tools and processes in order to move to that first five-year license. So in other words, the resident educator program is their continuing education. The key word for year one of the resident educator program is experience. With support of one-to-one mentors, REs work to develop the skills and strategies of good teaching beyond their pre-service university coursework. In year one, the resident educator will communicate with the mentor and principal, use formative assessment activities to collect evidence and advance their practice, document instructional meetings with mentor using collaborative logs, complete the year one formative progress review, and maintain a collection of evidence and documents, a repertoire of practices that will inform their summative assessment. In year two, the key word is analyze. Teachers continue to improve their practice through study and performance of the teaching and learning cycle, and completing the curriculum outlined in the year two of best practices timeline calls for a deeper analysis of student data, lesson study, and instructional cycles. Differentiated support, including working in cohort groups of two to four resident educators facilitated by a single mentor, co-teaching, or continuing to work with a one-to-one mentor as in the year one, help the RE toward meeting goals and understanding the complexity of teaching at a deeper level. The year-two formative progress review offers teachers an opportunity to formalize and align the professional practices that have occurred throughout the year with their mentor. During years three and four of the program, the resident educator will prepare for and complete the Resident Educator Summit of Assessment. You'll hear it called the RESA or the RESA. The RESA is a performance-based assessment that resident educators must successfully pass. The assessment calls for resident educators to demonstrate their ability to design and implement instruction that engages students in complex thinking and uses formative and summative assessments to inform their teacher practices. Resident educators must complete all four years of the Ohio Resident Educator Program and successfully pass the RESA to qualify for a five-year professional license. Mentors play a critical role in the success of resident educators. Mentors provide support and lead resident educators into deeper understanding and implementation of yearly best practices. Mentors attend the required training to obtain certification, and they become credentialed by engaging in training and ongoing professional development that is comprehensive, job-embedded, and reflective. Mentors communicate with the resident educator, program coordinator, and principal. It's important for mentors to communicate regularly with these people while respecting the confidential relationship they have with their REs. Mentors support the resident educator program, excuse me, through the use of formative assessment processes, protocols, and tools, and they collaborate with the program coordinator to complete that year-end formative progress review. In year two, mentors provide in-depth instructional mentoring of the year-two timeline of best practices through one-to-one mentoring, co-teaching, and/or cohort collaboration. In year three, they facilitate and support the resident educator in preparing for and taking that RESA. And in year four, they facilitate and support the resident educator to retake any deficient sections of the RESA and facilitate them, the resident educator, in participating in professional development and leadership activities. Principals play an important role in the resident educator program. They must understand the philosophy, curriculum, or requirements of the program, continue to create a learning environment which would help the resident educator thrive. They work with program coordinators to help select and assign mentors. They ensure that mentors attend the state training. They provide time for mentor-resident educator collaboration, and this is very important, also providing opportunities for observations, including reciprocal observations and observations of exemplary teachers. The resident educator program is for the purpose of professional growth and eventual five-year licensure. It is not, however, evaluative, and this is very important. Communication between the REs and mentors is a two-way arrow, as this communication must remain confidential with the exception of issues related to student safety. Resident educators and principals is also a two-way arrow, as they work collaboratively to ensure that district and building goals and priorities are being met and that REs are meeting expectations in terms of employment and placement. Principals must work with mentors, and here you'll see two one-way arrows. To support this relationship, mentors do not breach that confidential relationship they have with REs. The common goal of all of these relationships is increased student learning and achievement. The program coordinator is the district liaison with the Ohio Department of Education. Important information, program updates, and deadlines are sent directly to the program coordinator. A four-year induction program is complex. Program coordinators have an understanding of the big picture of the system in order to plan, implement, and report on the program. This graphic shows the current number of resident educators and mentors in Westerville. Note that year-one support is one-to-one resident educator and mentor, with the exception of two experienced teachers who, because of building availability, subject, have agreed to support two REs. These two mentors will meet with and support these REs separately to keep that one-to-one relationship. In year two, many REs have been placed in cohort groups, providing opportunities for that gradual release of mentor support. Some year-two REs, again, because of issues related to staffing, subject, or grades taught, may remain with a one-to-one mentor. In year three, the Westerville resident educators are working on their RESA, and 36 experienced teachers have taken or will take the online RESA facilitator training in order to support them in that rigorous summative assessment. 2014-15 is the fourth year of the resident educator program. Because of technology issues and many calamity days that so many districts in Ohio... Because of technology issues and many calamity days that so many districts in Ohio experienced last year, the RESA task due dates were moved to June 1st. Therefore, the process of scoring and determining cutoff scores has also been delayed, and so the people who took the RESA last year won't get their scores until mid to end of December. So in the meantime, these now-year-four resident educators are viewing the Online Learn to Lead Module. We're going to wait and see if any of the Westerville teachers need to retake deficient portions of the RESA, and then we'll provide them with the appropriate support at that time. And that's why you see a zero for mentor facilitators for year four. We're going to wait and find out what their needs are. The process of becoming an effective educator never ends. The Ohio Resident Educator Program supports new teachers as they practice, refine, and gain deeper understanding on the art and science of teaching through their personal journeys to excellence. Can I answer any questions?
Just curious, from a process standpoint, is, from a continuous improvement perspective, is there a 180 or 360 review process for the mentors as it relates to their effectiveness based on the opinion of those that are going through the RE program? You know, how do we, how do we make sure that we've got, I know they've gone through training as your resident and those types of things, but how do we make sure that we're also growing and developing the capabilities of those mentors in those roles?
Throughout the year, I offer seminars, and for the most part, the REs and the mentors meet together, so we can provide that additional collaboration time. But I do meet in years one and two with the mentors and the RE separately, so that I can gauge, so that we can have those. I tell them I'm Switzerland. So if there's issues related to mentoring that the REs need to share with me, they can do that, or mentors with the REs. And then at the end of the year, I do send out surveys. And there's an anonymous survey to gauge in general, but then there's also some that I ask for their names, so that I get some specific indicators of how well the mentors are supporting them. Other questions?
Yeah, first, I deeply believe in this program, but I'm going to ask, how much does this cost for the four years?
Well, we do support, the mentoring is covered by supplementals, as it has by contract for years. And I don't have those numbers, but we can get them for you. But we do know that it's a big commitment on the time, on the part of the mentors, and we know it's a good return on the investment in terms of, you know, not only teacher retention, but on performance. The other thing I'm real excited about is that strong alignment with this program and the OTAS. The people that are participating in that are going to have a better understanding of a lot of that. But if you want the actual numbers, I don't have them, but we could get them for you. Okay.
That was one question that I had as well. I just think it'd be good for us to be aware.
Sure.
I think it's important. I absolutely concur with Mrs. Davidson that, and I'm learning more about this program. You all may know more. Really, I'm learning about this. And I, I don't know you, but you are very passionate about this program. And I like that. I'm saying that as a compliment.
Thank you.
I just wrote a bunch of stuff here, some of which I, let me just ask, just maybe just kind of a process question as well. How are resident educators and mentors paired? Is it based on subject matter, based, just, I think that would be a very important component of how they work together collaboratively and to challenge the resident educator to, if they're not stepping up in area ABC, to step up. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does.
How is that pairing process?
Most of the pairing, in a district this size, it's difficult for one person, the program coordinator, to get to know everybody, although there are certain mentors that I've worked with over a period of time that I do know are extremely effective. But usually, the majority of the decision is up to the principals, which is why it's important for them to know as much about the program and its requirements as they can. We know that it's ideal when they can be in the same building grade and subject. So if you've got a third-grade teacher at X Elementary School, it's nice to have another third grade. If not, maybe a second or fourth grade. If it's high school, if you've got another science teacher, just sort of a science teacher, that's ideal, particularly in year one. And year two, it's not quite as important, because those collaborative conversations help them understand the bigger picture of what's going on in the building and the district. Sometimes, for instance, when you've got a magnet school that only has one of each grade level, that's not possible. So we try and find ideally somebody in the building. And a lot of the reason for that is, is the time commitment. You know, because to meet before or after school during a lunch, it's just easier if you're in the same building. Another situation is if you have one PE teacher. Sometimes we'll match them up with the art or music teacher, because they have some of those same common things, like dealing with the whole building and those larger pictures. So grade, building grade and subject are the first priority, but the most important is, who is this, can this person mentor? Can they keep those confidential relationships? Can they make that time commitment? So you might have somebody in that, like you say, are they the right person to mentor? You know, sometimes the best teachers can't take that, sit down and articulate what it is about their practice. You know, they just do it so, you know, it's second nature to them, they don't think about it. So to be able to think about and talk about your practice is also important. So there's some logistics, and then there's some of those non-things that are hard to see, those intangibles.
And, and, and in any mentoring process, I think that that would be true. I just, if we really are going to be focusing on student achievement, then we really are going to be focusing on developing our teachers to the, to the best of their ability. And we really are going to be focusing on leveraging our best teachers to help our core teacher cadre to, to rise to the highest level. So I, yeah, I, this is really, this is really great stuff, just kind of the background and cost and that whole process thing. I think it'd just be good for us to have our handle on that as well. So thank you. That's, that's it.
And I think it's important to see, not only do the new teachers benefit, but what they're finding, and a lot of the research that went into this program came from the New Teacher Center out in California, is that it's not just the new teachers that benefit, but the mentors, because they reflect on their practice and they have those conversations. And they're, we're finding that the teachers who support mentors become better teachers as well.
Yeah, and I can believe that.
So it's really strong.
I can believe that, because we, I mean, we would all say, I think we'd all say, if you really want to learn something, then you try to teach it.
Right.
And if you want to learn to, to help X person be a better teacher, then you have to go back into your, why do I do this the way I do it? And it seems to be successful, but I'm not sure why. So, yeah, that's an exciting possibility.
There's a lot of research that says that we learn more from reflecting on an experience than actually participating in it. So, you know, the actual process of reflecting and going back, which is why it's a big piece of the program.
See, now you've gone very deep with me.
I know.
I'm going to have to just think about that last statement. Thank you. Thank you.
I just want to say I thank you for an excellent presentation, and this is probably the first time I've seen it covered so well. So I appreciate that and keep that, because we may want to see that again. That's very good. You know, it's kind of, at the beginning, you've said something about, you know, the Ohio Resident Program and the OTAS and all that stuff. You know, years ago, we were not finished product. And I thought back, wow, I guess when I started teaching, I wasn't finished. But I didn't have to go through a four-year program to worry about my fifth year of licensure, you know? And that's what these poor teachers do have to do. I would ask that you, you are doing some type of survey with these teachers.
Yes.
With the mentors and with the...
REs, we call them, yes.
You're doing the REs also?
Mm-hmm.
And do you, could you share results, maybe as, well, my concern is, how well do the beginning teachers like it? The first-year and the second-year teachers? Or do they consider this kind of a, you know, this takes my time, I got to stay after school and work with this mentor? Not too often. But do, that survey, I assume you have some questions about that?
We have some data, and what you find is, is by far and away, most of the people say, I love my mentor, I couldn't have made it without my mentor, my mentor saved me, they provided, they listened to me. And it's funny, you know, we talk about the importance of being in the same grade or subject, but more often than not, it's those environmental, those people, those relationships, you know, that this is the person that really helped me, you know, do the classroom management and those other environmental things as much as the content. And so, you know, by far and away, over 95% of the surveys that I did last year, the people found that their mentors were invaluable.
Well, next time, maybe ODE also does some research eventually, once you get through the four-year. I don't know how many school districts are going through this.
Everybody is.
Yeah, but we were one of the first to do the test, right? Or did they all start four years ago? Okay. Do they have some statistics, then, I assume they do, on how well it's been received, how well it's done? Is there anything at all that ODE would have that you could share with us?
Well, I think it, we could look, but it might be a little bit premature, because like I said, this is year four of a year-four program.
Yeah, right.
So probably the end of this year, maybe even one year where we get the bugs out.
For the future.
But I think that's something we should definitely look down the road for.
Okay. I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm sure it's very stressful. So the, are the 18 CEUs gone by the wayside for everybody now?
No.
There's still a few.
Once you have your five-year license, you need those six semester hours or 18 CEUs or some combination. But what we're saying is, this program is, is their professional development. So this is their priority versus, you know, the coursework. It's that important, and we feel that it's that well researched and really what they need right now beyond taking a college course.
Interesting. Is there a textbook, or is it just not?
There are a lot of tools, program calls on the OD website for each year, you know, that talk about, you know, writing collaborative logs. The instructional cycle piece is very strong, but for the most part, they're guiding questions. And then I provide additional support for mentors. I send out a monthly checklist. Here's some things you might want to consider doing this month. Both those tangibles that are part of the program and some of those intangibles that they might want to think about.
Thank you. Thank you. I can ask you questions later. I've got a lot of little ones.
That's okay.
Thank you.
Lisa, I have one more question.
Sure.
Did I hear you say that they have different mentors each year? And is that by design and why?
Well, potentially, they do. Remember, we want those one-to-one relationships that first year. And in year two, we sometimes work in cohort groups. And that is, again, so that they have that gradual release of mentor support, and also so that they branch out and begin to collaborate on a larger scale. And, and some mentors work well, but better with that one-to-one relationship, and others are really good at engaging groups of people in conversations. So, and then in year three, again, there's still less release. These people are really the ones that, when they do this, this RESA, the Summit of Assessment, they don't tell them, you wrote this wrong, you should write it like this, but they hold up that mirror and say, you know, I want you to look at what you wrote, and I want you to look at the rubrics and, and think about where the connection is. And that's all. Because this is the year, in year three, they perform, and they do it on their own. So there are certain people that have those skills and talents to do that level of mentoring and facilitating. So it's a skill and talent thing, it's a getting the new teacher to, to engage with more than one person, and just sort of the purposes for each year.
If they failed the test in the third year, can they take it again?
There are actually five tasks. They all get scored independently.
Okay.
And so when they get these scores in December, they'll find out if they passed all five, or they have to retake deficient portions. That's why you can wait and take the RESA in year four, but for the most part, people will take it in year three, so they have that extra year. And then after that, there's, there's options for extending their four-year resident educator license if they need to.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm sorry, that was the, it was the, they took the test when these four?
In the first, the people who are currently year four.
Right, right.
Took the assessment in year three, last school year, and they will get their scores in December. The plan was always for them to get the scores in August, but there were delays because of any kind of new technology and the calamity days, because some of these teachers were, one of their tasks was to respond to an entire instructional cycle. And so they had a deadline, but they hadn't finished all the formative and summative assessments to do the reports. So they asked for, so anyway, with everything that went on, they just bumped everything till June 1st. But for validity testing, they want all the scoring done, and there are scorers scoring right now, I'm one of them, and they want all the scoring done, then they'll go to an outside company, and they'll do the validity testing and set the cutoff scores. So that's why they, they need October, November, so December's when their scores are. Next year, they'll get them in August, so they'll know, they'll have a whole year versus a semester to retake.
That's a long wait.
It is a long wait, and they're very frustrated.
Yeah.
They're very anxious.
So Lisa, as, as you look at what's been going on over these first few years, what are the biggest challenges that you see coming out of the pre-service institutions for our teachers?
Biggest challenges? I think that most of the teachers are coming out with a significant amount of content knowledge, and I think that a lot of what we need to look at is where the, those connections, where we transition them into those final pre-service opportunities, those student teaching opportunities into that first year of teaching. And I know that one of the big issues with OTAS right now is a lot of experienced teachers don't want to give up their classrooms to a student teacher. So a lot of the universities are looking at those co-teaching setups, where they, where a student teaching can, can allow that to happen, which, so that the, that the classroom teacher doesn't give up that total control, because they're worried about the test scores and how well their students do. And the student teacher has that, that support through a co-teaching experience versus that student teaching, where you had to do two weeks of solo teaching. And I think we're going to be working through that. And I think in the long run, it's going to improve the whole program. It's part of the process.
Yeah, I think it will. And I was actually thinking, given the amount of data that you're collecting from our, the REs and from the mentors as well, it might be worth it, and I know this is extraordinarily time-consuming as it is, but I was thinking, the colleges and universities that we work with the most often, with placements of student teachers and field experience and so forth, it might be worth sharing that information with them as they seek to better the program. In other words, not waiting for ODE to come out with whatever, but to work with our particular partners around the issues that we see, so that hopefully we can begin to shore up some of the deficiencies that come out of programs sometimes.
Great. Well, and I don't know if you'd ever call it deficiencies, but just needs to continue to, to work through as we, through this sort of thing. I don't know. I don't.
You call it what you want. I'll call it what I want. That's right. Tomato, tomato. Let's see, just a couple of comments. I do really appreciate this presentation. Most people are not aware of what teachers have to go through as regards the induction into the profession. You know, if you think about it, a lot of us, when we were kids, we thought our teachers just kind of lived and breathed at the school. They didn't have homes, they didn't have lives. They were born teachers, they died teachers. And we all have to grow up and change our views of what teaching is, and in many ways, we all have to shift our thinking as regards what the profession actually means in this day and age. And this is an extraordinarily important program, and I very much thank you for what you're doing. You're right, she is really passionate about it. What's so cool is, not only are you passionate about this program, but you're passionate about Westerville.
I am.
And Westerville schools. And that is delightful. Also, one other thing that I wanted to point out is, in designing this program, ODE was really looking toward other professions that have significant induction experiences that are necessary to professional success. In particular, a lot of these programs are devised on the medical training model. And when you read through and you begin to look at all the components of this program, I'm hoping that people will see the clear connections to other induction programs such as medicine.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Thank you so much.
So the nice thing, the, two nice things. One is, of course, Lisa's passion and understanding this is really instrumental in our success, because this is one of those things could easily become a compliance issue as opposed to improvement initiative. And her style and her understanding, her passion for, I think, helps move past the compliance, unless you're having trouble uploading your video and sending it to Ohio, right?
Exactly.
Then it becomes a compliance issue.
It's going to be better this year.
And she, she does a great job that way, because we don't hear that, that this is a have-to, because you're required. What we hear is, this is a want-to, because I want to get better. The second thing about this is, over the time period that this group of teachers, and you're seeing these folks come into the system now, are gaining, that we, that we need to capitalize after year four, is that model of instruction. And you hear emphasis on professional collaboration, use of student data in regard to lesson design, intervention, acceleration. Those are all parts of the model that they're getting in that mentorship relationship over those four years, that we know have to be part of our instructional model moving forward. And so having a cohort of people coming through that with the lived expectation, that's how we do business, and that's what the rubric and the OTAS model says, one of the things we're emphasizing with our administrators and our teachers. We're building that, that runway towards a really solid understanding of what is good instruction for teachers. And so appreciate her leadership and passion for doing this, and I, I just hear lots of positive things from teachers about this one. And I can tell you that in lots of places, the lived experience is a little bit different than what our Westerville... And I can tell you that in lots of places, the lived experience is a little bit different than what our Westerville teachers are getting, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. And John, I very much appreciate the work that the administrators put into bringing these forward. These reports are important, and as you said, we're going to continue making the effort to bring this kind of knowledge and these kind of reports forward, not only for the board's education, but also for the community, so that the community has a better sense of what is going on within this district and why it goes on as it does. So thank you for that. Item six on the agenda, public comments. The first portion of public comments is reserved for comments that have to do with things that are on the agenda for the current meeting. And comments are limited to five minutes, and we have one individual signed up to speak, and she knows who she is, it's Louise Reese.
I'm going to have to take my glasses off and squint at all of you so that I can read my notes. I went through the agenda before coming to the meeting, and I'm very pleased. And I don't think in 20 years I remember getting presentations like we got tonight, and that's just wonderful. And I also appreciated Dr. Kellogg's comments about the metrics, and that's encouraging news as well. One of the things, there's several agenda items, not several, three or four. The staffing summary, what steps are currently being taken to hire staff with the technology skills that the district will eventually be spending money on training staff to have? So that would be a question that I would like to add to the questions about 150 staff potentially being replaced with new staff. And did the job descriptions get reviewed? And if so, can the public see a copy of what new technology requirements there might be? And then as another component of that, when you speak to the universities that you do a lot of work with and talking about teacher candidates, can we put a little push in there as to what their educational training programs contain, so that we start to get staff that come to us with skills, so that we can spread that wealth amongst, you know, the rest of the district a little bit more quickly? I also saw that there's, looking at the funds and the budget, and I know this is jumping ahead to Bart, I'm wondering what fund is paying for the mentoring program? And I think when this started, I'm not sure if the figure was 3,000 per mentor. I don't recall exactly, but it's a significant amount of money, and in my world at least. So I just am curious as to how we're funding the mentoring program, so that would be another question. Under item 8.03, the contractual changes, I have a question. What is a technology integration specialist, and what will they do at the ELC? But I also see that we have information technology liaisons that have been hired or are hired for the elementary schools. And so again, I was wondering what type of job description these people have? And is there anything going on for the high school level for, in that regard? I also, the title, the Fund 533, I saw it listed above Bart, but I couldn't track where in the actual information that you'll be going through. Title, 2D Technology to Improve State Academic Achievement Through Technology in Schools to Assist Students in Becoming Technologically Literate by the End of 8th Grade and to Encourage Effective Integration of Technology with Teacher Training and Curriculum Development to Establish Successful Research-Based Instructional Methods, which all sounds wonderful. But first of all, I couldn't find 533 in the budget. And can you tell us how much is in Fund 533? Okay. And is this money separate and different money from the $1 million that we previously heard about last year that was going to be applied towards technology or available for technology if the board approved it? And how is this money currently being spent, like the type of things that it's being spent on? These are some of the types of questions that I'm having, just watching as my son starts in at ninth grade at the high school. And I'm very anxious to see more happen at a faster pace. Obviously, I think I've discussed this billion, zillion, gazillion times. So I would just appreciate it if some of the information pertains to that aspect. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments before we move forward?
One of the places I would say to keep an eye on, one of our future presentations is on the learning and teaching roadmap. I've forgotten what month we had that slated for, for the board, but much of what you discuss is embedded in that. We're also getting that document from its 110-page current overly-written piece, slimmed down for easier public consumption. So we're working on that, so that the strategies, many of which you talked to, are embedded in there, will be part of that as well. So I appreciate the push. Job descriptions, yes. All of those positions have job descriptions, yes.
So I'm asking specifically about what new technological skills the employees should come with when we hire them, and whether that's been updated.
It's all, yeah, it's all in that roadmap as we implement, yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Some of the questions, well, actually, most of those questions were tightly addressed to the administrative staff at this point in time, some of which we may hear this evening, and others which we'll hear later on. And also, as those questions go forward, if we interpret the answers differently than you were asking the question, please be sure and let us know, and let John know, let Gary know, especially as regards some of those HR questions. Gary can be a big help with that. Moving on to item seven, the financial appropriation, the final appropriations for fiscal year 2015. This will be a first reading. And since it's a first reading, we do not have to have a motion and a second on this, so I'm going to turn it over to Bart.
Okay. President Nestor Baker, thank you, members of the board. This is a, typically appropriations are done in the month of June. But we had a lot of changes this year, we had a lot of negotiations, we had a lot of unpredicted things happening. So we basically, by law, these aren't done, don't have to be done until the 1st of October. So in the past, I think we've done these in September as well. That's why you're seeing them September versus in June. We are doing them as two readings. This one will be a presentation. Next month will just be, there won't be a presentation if there's any changes, we can make changes, but it'll just be a vote next, the next board meeting on the 22nd. This is an annual appropriation measure. These appropriations are for the period of July 1 to 2014 to June 30, 2015. If you remember, when we did appropriations back in June, we set them at 75% of the prior year. And that gives us the authority then to pay bills until we get to this point. So they are for this fiscal year 15 only. The general fund basically just reflects the assumptions and amounts that are included in several places, and is included in the five-year forecast. We also talk with administrators, beginning usually in February, working with administrators. Mark's working with the budgets this year with all the building administrators. We met with every administrator prior, who is in charge of any budgets at all. We met with them February through May, getting their input of what they need, what they don't need, and how can we move funds around different places. But so we started this process actually in February. Each fund is a distinct self-balancing accounting entity, which means, I know most of us talk about general fund, but we actually have a lot of funds. And we'll show those here later on. Each one can only be spent for this fund that it's recorded in. We basically record the revenue when it comes in, and we record the expenditures when they go out. Each fund is separate and distinct. Keep in mind that our appropriations do not include city or county operations. They are not part of the Westerville Public Library, although sometimes when the public library does levies, we do, as a board, approve those. That's the only difference. We don't do their budgets, but we do approve any levies that they may need to put on in the future or the past. You will see those. And if you were to pull, I think, our report from the county audits office, it'll show a library levy under the schools, because we approve them, okay? But we are not the fiscal agent for the library, okay? We are fiscal agents sometimes, you'll hear us talk about 401 funds. If there's a public school, or if there's a school that's sort of like a Catholic school or Christian school, or some ports, and we are the fiscal agent for them, they're listed in 401 funds. The state gives us their funds to manage so that they're spent accordingly what the state wants them spent on. So it's just a pass-through. They give us the money, the school tells us what they want to spend, and we do the purchase orders. You'll see those as 401 funds. Object codes, I gave you kind of a summary of what each, we always talk about object codes. If you talk about personal services, those are 100s. Anything that paid salaries are 100. Any retirement, self-insurances, you'll see is 200s. Kind of got ahead of myself there. 200s, there are no 300s. So if somebody says, well, we can never find your 300s on your report, there are no 300s. Don't know why, they just never have been, so there are no 300s. Usually when we talk about employees of the district, we talk about, I think in May, I made a comment about payroll, 100s and 200s being 78% of the general fund budget. That is a true statement. And then a gentleman asked me about, what about the substitutes that are paid from the ESC? Those are paid in the 800 accounts. Those account to about 4%. I didn't add the two together, but if you, you know, you can, I suppose. But, so somebody says, well, what about substitutes? We get our substitutes from Franklin County ESC, those are paid from the 800 object code. And so other governmental institutions. 400s are purchased services, anything that we pay for. Utilities would be in that category. 500s are supplies and materials. There are some things that used to be under capital expenditures, if they're less than 1,000, sometimes we'll pay those from the supplies and materials. But capital outlay, for the most part, is anything, is coded as a 600 code. Those are, anything usually that's going to cost 3,000 or more, we try to put in those categories. 800s, again, are objects, debt service, dues, fees, treasury fees, stuff like that. 900s, sometimes you'll see, and we have one tonight, we have transfers. Anytime we transfer money out, those are coded to 900s. That's what makes up those numbers. Fund descriptions, for this presentation, I only have the first four on here, of 100s through 007. The Word document that we'll have with us will have every fund that we have listed and what those can be expended on. But for this presentation, I didn't want to cloud all that with a lot of funds. Which you can see, the general fund is by far the largest fund we have. Out of $211 million, 150 million comes from the general fund. The bond retirement is just that, if we purchase buildings, it comes from bond retirement. 003 is permanent improvement, 006 is food service, and then it goes on from 7s, trust funds, and so forth. But I just gave you a flavor, so you can see what those are in. Here's actually the list of funds, and as Ms. McAdams Reese identified, we do not receive 533 as a federal fund. Any 500 as a federal fund, we do not receive any of that. Okay, so we do not receive those funds. You can see here, you know, anywhere, 506 was raised to the top. The reason you see that in here is because we referenced it in fiscal year 14's money, but we did not get it any in fiscal year 15 as of yet. So you can see the state funds, federal funds. You can see what category they're in. Like if you look at 006 on the right, you'll see it's in enterprise fund, as well as uniform school accounting. Supply is in the 009. Trust funds are expendable, they're all in their own categories, which is where they're supposed to be. This just gives you an idea where they're supposed to be. The final appropriation measure, again, these budgets, this final appropriation is set at the fund level. We do manage them, we do have them coded to the object level and even to the function level. But the board, when you approve them as a fund level, we don't have to, if, we don't have to bring millions of changes to you. You appropriate a one-fund total dollar. In this case, when you'll see, I think it's $211 million. That's the appropriation you can, you have to stay within. If a fund changes, and we go over that, we have to bring those back to you for your approval. So I'll show you here in a minute what those are. But these are set at the fund level. We are, when we're audited, they still look at your object codes and your function codes and stuff like that. But they look to see what was appropriated at the fund level. All right, and I know this is hard to see, but this is an example of a page I took out of the Word document. This is a list of all the funds. What you see on this page, and I apologize, my clicker doesn't work on this one, but it will on this one. You'll see a place up there that says, July 1, 2014 appropriation. That was the temporary appropriations that we did at June 30. That's the number that we started with. You can see really, the only number we changed really, for the most part, is a general fund. We tried to keep the other funds of what they were anyway. You can see then, the second, the bigger column where it says 922, 2014. Those are the appropriations that we believe, that we want you to approve on September 22nd. Again, the general funds is by far the largest one that changes. There's a couple other changes of just information we received since the June meeting. But for the most part, the appropriation that you'll be approving next board meeting is totals $211,249,235. And again, those are fund-specific. So throughout the year, if we get more or less additional state or federal money, we have, and it changes, we have to bring these back to you for approval. If the state cuts us in a federal fund, and we have to reduce budgets, we'll bring them back to you to make those adjustments. We try to bring those back to you when we have them. Sometimes if, for some reason, the federal government wants to give us a 533 fund, we'd have to come back and add it. If we get something new, we would add it later. So these are the funds that we have now, that we know now what these amounts are, what we believe they're going to be. If things change, we bring them back to you for approval. Sometimes, I guess as a side note, if you look at this and say, well, gosh, you've only got $150 million in appropriations, sometimes you may try to compare this to the five-year forecast. Keep in mind, the five-year forecast is actual expenditures. We have to account for things in here that we may not spend. You know, if we have extra money in there for utilities, we have to appropriate what we think might happen, not necessarily what will happen. So it's a little different than the five-year forecast that's presented. Five-year forecast, you know, has a lot of assumptions built in as well. This pretty much has what we think, what we think will happen, but we plan for contingencies, okay? So hopefully, this will be a lot less what we spend this year, but we have to, we have to at least be prepared for them. This account here, if you want to compare them, this is the comparison between fiscal year 14, which was last fiscal year, compared to fiscal year 15, which is this fiscal year. You can see in there what the differences are. Once you, I know the audience can't see those because they're too small numbers, but once, if, we're going to have this available on the website, we'll be able to, anybody that wants, we can have it. This just shows you the differences between fiscal years, either in the plus or the minus. Just to give you a little bit of comparison, personal services, again, you can see in fiscal year 11, we were at $91.9 million. This year, we're proposed to be at $86 million. So we're still about $5 million short of where we were in 2011. Employee benefits, one of the reasons there, that's even, we're almost back to the fiscal year 11. Keep in mind, insurance rates, if they go up 10% a year, it's about $1.5 million, just in insurance rates. So that's kind of a bigger contributor to that line. Purchased services, we're at $19 million, we're at 11, we were at $20 million. So I think purchased services are about, they're only, they're up about $450,000 from where they were last year. Capital outlay, one of the reasons you see the jump in capital outlay. If you remember, when we did technology, we allocated a million in technology, but we didn't really implement the plan until late in the year, so we didn't spend that money. What you see in fiscal year 14 were actual expenditures in that category. We didn't spend the money in technology, so it's sort of got added to 15, is why 15 looks higher this year. Okay, other, other objects are the, again, are the 800s, 900s, those are fairly consistent. I gave you just a little bit of graphs, so visually, even though you can't see them in the audience, where the numbers are, you can still see the graphs and kind of how they compare conceptually compared to each fiscal year, fiscal year 11 through fiscal year 15. This here is the actual resolution that you will be approving, hopefully, and at the next meeting. You can see, we actually write the number up here. If that number changes, the resolution of, in other words, if it changes between now and the next two weeks, that number will change. But for the most part, this is what you will be presenting for the next board. And I think that's kind of a quick and easy presentation. Any questions you may have about that, or any information you want different?
Yeah, I'd like to, let's, let's talk a little bit about the 78 and 4 that you mentioned. I think it's interesting as it relates to the personnel costs and the ESC on the substitutes. I'm trying to make a comparison to my corporate experience. I'm assuming, and I'm going to be very cautious how I state this, because I am not at all devaluing substitutes. However, from a purchases standpoint, I'm assuming that we look at substitutes from an accounting basis, almost like a consumable, right? That we use substitutes when necessary, we do not use substitutes when unnecessary.
They're only called in if there's a vacancy, or if there's training and you need to fill those vacancies, we use the ESC. The ESC, when you look at those numbers, if I go back one, in 2011, we basically hired the substitutes ourself through our district. We started using them in 2012 as a service. One of the reasons when we changed that, we were paying them the substitute a little bit higher rate, and we went to the ESC. We sort of cut that back, that was in a period of making all these reductions. We actually pay the substitutes less. One advantage to having them at the ESC now is the insurance piece of it. One of the loopholes, for lack of a better term, on insurance, if we were to hire the substitutes through us currently, by law, because we're an educational institution, we basically take their year's service divided by nine months. We can't count the summer months as time not worked. The ESC can. So if we were to have them on here, we'd probably have anywhere if we were to have them on here, we'd probably have anywhere from fifty to seventy-five individuals that we'd probably have to put on insurance. The ESC may have one. So there's an advantage to having them do.
Sure.
They do all the substitutes right now, except for transportation. They don't want the liability. So we do our own transportation subs and our own food service substitutes. Any other substitutes we receive come from the ESC.
Okay. So I'm understanding the, the differentiation then. They are, it's seventy-eight plus four, net of eighty-two for personnel-related expenses. But as it relates to school payroll, that's seventy-eight, right?
That's correct. Because we, we pay them through here. We get billed from the ESC, which is the eight hundreds, when we pay other governmental institutions, come from that line item.
Yeah.
So our payroll only is one hundreds and two hundreds, because we're paying them.
Okay, good. That's not, that, that helps me greatly, because that's not inconsistent with the way that, again, we manage corporate finances, that I'm not carrying costs for people that are coming out of a shared services contract agency, you know, because that's, that's why I contracted with them. In this case, the ESC.
Right.
So, excellent. Thank you.
And the question about, we don't have such thing as permanent substitutes, do we?
Not that. I, I know some districts, if you-
Some districts do.
To explain what that is, sometimes if, if, some districts, if you have an average of fifty absences a day, some districts may hire five or ten teachers, just to come in every day. They're on your staff. If there's an opening, you fill them. If you need a substitute beyond then, you would go to the ESC. But, but we do not have permanent substitutes that we have come in every day waiting to be assigned.
Thank you. The, the question, I don't know if we answered the question on the supplemental, when you go back to your budget there. Supplemental pays come out of the general fund, doesn't it?
The supplemental pays come out of the general fund. I think in the past, I think we had this discussion this morning, Race to the Top, we used to get money from Race to the Top, Dr. Kellogg, for some of that money only, wasn't it?
If we're talking specifically about resident educator?
Yeah.
Yes, there was. So the, the history on reimbursement for teacher induction was that at one point, ODE was providing reimbursement to school districts of an amount, and I've forgotten the dollar amount. It then changed, and as the resident educator program came on, which was attached to Ohio's ESEA waiver and the federal dollars in the Race to the Top, under the two years of that federal grant, we received the amount of money for resident educator program. Race to the top, top grant at the state level is done. So my understanding at this point, and I know we wanted clarification on resident educators, we don't get reimbursement for that. If, if, that's specific to resident educator, but I think your question was about supplemental contracts, period.
General, yeah.
Supplemental contracts in general, whether it's athletics or anything else, come from the general fund.
Right.
Right. If you, on the sheet up here, if you look at Race to the Top, there actually was a, it was a five oh six number, I believe, up there. I can't really read it either. That was Race to the Top. We got twenty-one thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars last year. We didn't get any this year. So that's what, that's what we would have received as part of that program for that group. But in general, all supplementals come from the general fund.
Right. I just wanted to clarify. Somebody asked, I, if that was Mrs. Reese.
I should say, general fund or athletic fund. There are some, there are some that come from the athletic fund. It's like coaches and stuff like that.
The other piece, Bart, if I could chime in. I heard the question about the seventy-eight percent we cite for payroll, and then attaching the purchase service for substitutes and other employees that are contracted services. And, and it's okay to lump those together and talk about, is it seventy-eight, or is it true cross to eighty-two? But when you're comparing across districts, which is often the case, it's fair to use the same number. So when we cite a number like seventy-eight percent for payroll, we're doing that in the context of, that's what ODE does in all their reporting. Okay? So it's unfair to then say, well, you know, in Westerville, it's really seventy-eight plus four percent because of the subs and everything over here. So you're really eighty-two percent. And now you're comparing apples to oranges, because when you're pulling the data from other school districts, they're, they're not including. So it's, it's an ODE function of how the state reports out our dollars. So if you're, if you're going to make those comparisons district to district, then it's fair to say, well, if Westerville includes the purchase service part for payroll, then you should do the same thing for Worthington or Dublin or Hilliard. So just from a comparison standpoint, that's oftentimes what happens. The other thing I'd say is, although we've contracted with the ESC, one of the things we have to keep an eye on is fill rate. So here's a level of being in the weeds you may not want to know. But on a daily basis, the percentage of staff members who are out and the percentage of subs that we can fill is an important number. Because if, any sub you don't bring in is a position you didn't get a sub for, and you're filling that with a, a teacher who's on contract, and the pay for that is different than the pay for the substitute. So that fill rate is a big, big point of, of, one of those metrics we got to follow with ESC when you contract that out to see. And you, what you might find is, though, okay, we went to the ESC, we now save money because through the ESC we can get subs cheaper. But what you start to hear school districts say is, because you've lumped everybody together, the competition for people is such that you may have to, in order to have a better fill rate, up the cost. So your costs and the subs go down, up, but your cost and employees who are receiving compensation for covering classes goes up. So there's this seesaw effect.
Right.
And so-
So do you know what our fill rate is with, with the ESC?
It, you know, it-
Pretty good?
It's seasonal, and you can imagine why, right?
Seasonal, yeah.
So you get, you get the flu season and staff, and so all those-
We quite often have to have our own teachers filling a, a period, a-
There are days we, we, there are days we don't-
Period after another, somebody, yeah.
Correct. And so we do track that, Mr. Smetzer's office tracks that fill rate. And it's one of those metrics we use to make sure that the quality of service we're getting in the ESC, because, and the expenses associated with that are working out for our kids and our staff.
Thank you. Additional questions? Well, I don't have any questions for you right now, but I do want to congratulate you. There are very few people who can talk about school finance and make it seem quick and easy. And you do, and it's, it's accurate. It's right on target. I think that's, that's very impressive.
Thank you.
Want to make sure that the presentations are readily obvious on the website for people to see. And also, you probably won't like this idea. I'm wondering whether you, and maybe John could go with you as well, would be interested in letting the service groups, various organizations within the community, know about these presentations in order to go provide this presentation to them. Because it does reduce significantly the amount of misconception that tends to be out there around what school finance is and is not.
That's fine. I'm sure we'd be available if somebody wants some.
That'd be good. So I'd, maybe ask Greg if he could reach out to various organizations and let them know that we have a guru in school finance presentation here.
Just to add more to his job here.
That's right. That's right. By the way, for those who do not know, and, you know, we toss around ESC a lot of the time. And for people who don't know what that is, it's the Educational Service Center of Central Ohio. And it is a contract services, shared services organization. Years and years and years ago, it would have been what people called the old county board. And years and years and years ago, there wasn't a whole lot of relationship between the old county board and districts like Westerville, because we were considered big city districts. However, over time, there has been a lot of change legislated as regards what the ESCs can do. And it now is a function wherein all of the districts and a number of private schools in the area are able to participate in shared costs and also shared trainings as well. So what was the old county board is now something that is a significant benefit to all districts. Anything else anybody wants to bring up about this, this evening? And this will be back again next time. So please stay tuned. Moving on in the agenda to seven point zero two, this is a resolution to approve the transfer of funds from the general fund, that's zero zero one, to the athletic funds, three hundred. Could I have a motion on this, please?
So moved.
Thank you. Could I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. With that, Mr. Griffith, I'll turn it over to you.
Madam President, Members of Board, this is a transfer of funds. What I put in the board agenda, board docs, basically, somebody said, where's this money coming from and why are we transferring at this point? This money actually is, when we, a couple of years ago, instituted a higher pay to participate, we sort of had an agreement with the boosters that they would pay at least fifty percent of the supplementals for athletics. Anything over that would be given back to them. That's what this transfer is. That there's roughly, we're roughly transferring twenty-nine thousand dollars back into the athletic fund, which was from their commitment to funding at least fifty percent of the athletic supplementals. And that's what this transfer is over that amount. So it's gone, excuse me, it's going back to the athletic fund.
Comments or questions?
It prom, it obviously does, I don't, does it cover the supplementals? One hundred percent, probably not at this point.
Well, their agreement was to cover fifty percent of it.
Yeah.
So-
But the other fifty percent.
The other fifty percent is the board's share. And if I remember right, Dr. Kellogg, when we did this a couple of years ago, that this method is not sustainable. And at some point, we have to fix that.
Yeah, we're, the history of this is, we, in the past, the pay to participate fee, which was lower at that time, was a sixty, forty split between the board and the athletic departments, as well as the general fund was picking up the cost for athletic transportation. The, the history now, or the current state, is that the pay to participate fees, all collected by the board, goes into the general fund. The, the first fifty percent of that, which is what Mr. Griffiths was referring to, covers fifty, excuse me, the bulk of that covers the first fifty percent of supplemental contracts. The other fifty percent of supplemental contracts comes out of general fund. And any, any residual, which is what we're acting on tonight, we've filtered back to those athletic departments, because they picked up all the costs of transportation. So, and when you start, that cost back to the athletic departments that they have to sustain is a pretty hefty blow on top of, they lost the revenue from the pay to participate from before. So they're not, they're not getting the same dollars to run those programs that they had in the past. And that's an area to keep an eye on, because some of those departments, if you don't have a good, good football season and good gate, you know, it's the same cost. And I can tell you, there's some OCC wranglings going around, around this issue about who's traveling where. So you've got some updates on that one, too, about what division you're in and where you have to travel to. And we've been fighting tooth and nail on that one to make sure that our travel distances, A, makes sense for kids and families, and B, makes sense financially for us. So this is one we're going to have to keep an eye.
Yeah, just, just to that point, Dr. Kellogg, just, I guess a question, is there an opportunity for us to have an operationally oriented work session with ADs, with other administrative staff, and talk about options, you know, inclusive of the OCC discussions and, you know, realistically, what's going on in that space, so that we can start to think about other pathways here? If it's not sustainable, I don't want us to get painted into a corner where we have to make a decision without a lot of good thinking ahead of time. So possibly getting together a constituency group of stakeholders internally to review it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Bart, would you call the roll?
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Dr. French?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes. The resolution to approve the transfer of funds from the general fund to the athletic funds has been approved. And we now move on to item eight. And that's, this is the personnel consent agenda for this evening, September eighth. And could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you. Could I have a second?
Second.
Yay. Having a motion and a second. Looks like Gary is at the podium. You ready to go?
Thank you. If I could just piggyback on the substitute discussion for a minute. Last week, we invited, we being HR, invited Doug Benneke from the ESC to stop by so we could have a discussion about substitutes and how we could play our part in that to enhance the number of people available to sub for us in the school district. And I thought it was time well spent. Doug is well aware of some of the issues that we have that, you know, are concerning to us. Today, I will tell you, we had a ninety-five percent fill rate. So it's still not a hundred, but it's, it's in a good place. And so we, we do take that seriously, because we do understand the additional cost that Bart talked about. When we have to have a teacher go in a classroom and sub, that is more expensive and so forth. So we, we address that, we watch that very closely every day, the fill rate that we have. And like I said, I was very happy to see ninety-five percent today. It made me feel better. So, under personnel, under the resonate, resignation section, there are two licensed supplemental contract resignations. There are two classified resignations. Under contractual status change, there are five classified folks, two custodians, one food service, and two support staff. Also, one licensed staff member at North, a science teacher. And that is in the ESL program, and that's based on student needs. And so we had to go from point six to point eight to meet the increase in students there. Change of assignment, there are six classified, fifteen classified temporary people filling in various positions. One adjustment to change of assignment for classified staff. Under one-time payments, there is one for testing services, for gifted testing, gifted evaluation. Under leave of absence, there are two classified staff members. And under the final section, employments, there are three classified members, two classified substitutes, one adjusted, adjustment to employment, classified action, a recess aid. And again, that was due to a, a training that took place in that school. And under license, there are, there's one teacher, two homebound tutors, and then several supplemental contracts related to a lot of different areas and so forth.
Questions for Gary this evening? I hear none. Bart?
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. French?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes. The personnel consent agenda has been approved this evening. And so we move on in the agenda to item nine, which is policy consent. And we have no business there. We have no business on section ten, which is old business. And we have nothing under new business, which is section eleven, which brings us to section twelve on the agenda, standing business. And we do have an interesting piece here, twelve point zero one, the Child Development Council of Franklin County lease agreement. Could I have a motion on this, please?
So moved.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Thank you. With a motion and a second, I'll turn this over to Dr. Kellogg.
Thank you, President. Nestor Baker, members of the board. So Jeff, you're here to, you got this one?
It's all yours, buddy.
Mine?
You take it.
All righty. Last December, we presented to the board a building utilization option that included the use of Central College Elementary for shared service opportunities. And at that time, we're exploring the possibility of relocating the Warm program. After Warm's decision to purchase their new facility, we began working with the Child Development Council of Franklin County to explore providing Head Start services as part of the Federal Head Start School Readiness Act. Head Start is an early learning program for preschool-aged children of families in poverty, designed to promote school readiness and meet the child's emotional, social, health, nutritional, and psychological needs. The program started in nineteen sixty-five as an eight-week summer program in a few low-income communities as part of President Johnson's War on Poverty. And today, it has evolved into a half-day program throughout the school year, serving over nine hundred and twenty-nine thousand students nationwide. The lease agreement provides usage of two classrooms and one office at Central College. Each classroom will operate as two half-day sessions, Tuesday through Friday, with a total of seventeen children per classroom, ages three to five. And this would be an additional sixty-eight students, Westerville students that could be served, increasing our capacity by thirty-five percent. The lease commences on October first of this year and ends July thirty-first of two thousand and seventeen, and does include a clause where either party may terminate the lease by giving a ninety-day notice. In lieu of rent, the parties agree to cooperate with regard to training and consultation to strengthen educational programs made available to our students. We will continue utility, custodial, and maintenance responsibilities, and the Child Development Council will provide instructional staffing and classroom furniture. And we are recommending that the board approve the lease agreement with the Child Development Council as presented.
Questions, comments, thoughts?
Okay. I am just elated with this partnership. I, to have kids in the building is, is wonderful. I worked for Head Start for years, and I saw the impact- I worked for Head Start for years, and I saw the impact that it has on the children as well as the families. And I think this is gonna be fabulous for our Westerville kids. So thank you.
Excellent.
Um, I'd piggyback on, on those comments that, um, this is a, one of those types of things that kind of equates to a win-win-win, and possibly even several more wins. Jeff and I have spent quite a bit of time together, and I'm learning a lot of the idiosyncrasies about Ohio Revised Code that relates to physical, physical facilities that are, you know, within our responsibility to manage for the community. Having a occupant in the building is a big win for the school district in light of, of those issues with how properties are expected to be managed and dispositioned by the state. I think that the results, you know, going back to the Johnson era as it relates to the Head Start programs, are well documented. There's a tremendous amount of evidence of the positive academic and educational outcomes from Head Start. So we've got a great, uh, community opportunity here. I, I think it's a real plus for us to find pathways to have good outcomes. And I think as it relates to our position and our investment into this property with the additional custodial staff, it is money well spent and wisely spent on this particular parcel. So thank you again for, for all your work on this. I know it's been a, a long road to get, you know, through all the processes and get it taken care of, but I really appreciate it. So thank you.
Other comments?
Just a question again, make sure I understand. We will be paying for the custodian, they will be paying for the teachers?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sure.
Yeah.
I'm just really echoing the affirmation of this. If we expect children to achieve at a certain grade X, and we know that they are often coming into schools, um, some perhaps deficient, not, not due at all to them, just, uh, life circumstances, and we can provide, well, let's even begin before kindergarten and begin to develop, you know, human beings into lifelong learners, man, that's just awesome. And, uh, I, that's, that's great. Thank you for pursuing it. And I, I, for the, for, for the bucks, I think it's a significant bang. And, um, I'm excited.
I'm excited, too. I think it's really great. And Ricky, you were, you mentioned what is extremely important to me. We have about a third of our children who are economically disadvantaged in this district. And what we know is that children in poverty, often, not always, but often enter school up to a couple of years behind their age peers who are not economically disadvantaged. And that gap tends not to close over time for so many of those children. And in fact, sometimes it widens over time. And what we also know is that if we're going to narrow that gap, and if, in fact, for many of our children, if we, if we're going to be able to erase that gap, we have to really focus on what's going on in early childhood. Not just here in Westerville, but everywhere. We need to really pay attention to what's going on with our children. It's, um, it's very clear. There is no doubt about the evidence about what happens to children who are not ready to succeed in school. So this is a, a win for the usage of the building and the protection of our rights around the building. It's also a win for the children who'll be part of the program. And it's a significant win for us as a system, as a district, as we look at how to really focus on that really good alignment between pre-K and the K-12 system. We're working on that, everybody's working on that, and this positions us very nicely to do that. Let's see if there was anything else I wanted to, oh, I know what I wanted to say. There has been a lot of talk over the past few years that said Head Start doesn't work. And so when you look at the numbers, you have to start to peel away, you know, what was being examined, how is it being examined? What are the intervening variables that play and all of that and so forth? And much of the evidence, actually, when you look at it, it's more condemnatory of failed schools that children enter into than it is the Head Start evidence itself. As children move into K-12 schools, if they come out of strong Head Start programs or other early childhood programs, we want that impact, that effect from those programs, positive effect, to really carry forward with those children. When children go into strong school settings, when children go into programs that are aligned across that pre-K through 12 continuum, then we see that that impact does continue. When we see children going into schools that are struggling or schools where there is a level of challenge within the community that's hard to overcome, then we don't see that impact going forward. So when we look at whether it works, we have to look at it in the context of what we will be doing here in the K-12 program as well. So I really like what we're setting up for these children and for the community as a whole. Yeah.
The, the other piece I throw on the heap is this district's commitment to preschool education, don't forget downstairs.
Yeah.
So there's another 240-some-odd students downstairs, that same age group, some of them with disabilities. So, you know, as a board and as a community, you've, you've made a significant commitment to early childhood education, and all the research says, early intervention. And then you're correct, connecting that to good schools K-on is the key 'cause three years of a good teacher and kids off and sailing. And that's what we're trying to build here. So the opportunity to continue that partnership, the staff downstairs is a great job, connects with our elementaries. This is one that's, we got a connection. Barb Wallace has been instrumental in that relationship with Head Start through her elementary department. So this is, this is a great opportunity. I'm hoping it's, it, it goes well and that the demand for the seats is high enough that they return and look for a third and a fourth classroom in, in the future.
Those of you who are here and people who will watch this later on on television, hopefully you see the theme that's going on tonight as we look at the alignment pieces, as we look at the building of systems that really serve children to the very best possibility. Uh, I think you've probably seen a lot of that tonight. Would you call the roll, Mr. Treasurer?
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Dr. French?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes. The Child Development Council of Franklin County Lease Agreement has been approved. Moving on to item 13, the second portion of public comment, which includes comments for the good of the order, but no one has signed up to speak tonight, so I'm not gonna say anything else about that. So we'll move on to board comments. Item 14, would any board members like to speak this evening?
Just, yeah, just real quickly, back to the ESC discussion. See how to say this. ESC has been in the news lately for some, uh, for some pretty hurtful things, I think. But I would, uh, I would suggest that the broad brush of what ESC does for constituent school districts, um, and now some improved oversight, it, it is a, it is a, it is a wonderful bank of, um, what, opportunities and goods and services and things that I was, truth be told, I, I really, I was not really aware of ESC, what that was all about. So there are several things to comment on from the finances and everything, but I'm just gonna kind of like push that away and, and just leave that as my comment that it's unfortunate when something of that nature just like explodes with ugliness. But it's fortunate that it sounds like some much better oversight is going to come into play. And I hope that we can see, see ESC for the good that they will be bringing to, and continue to bring. So that, let me just leave it at that.
Comment is real quick, I'm sorry.
Please, go ahead.
Uh, just to, um, thank Lisa and Gary for their presentations. They were great. And appreciate your time that you put in to get it so we understood it. And, uh, so, um, keep it because we may need it again. Thank you.
I just wanted to call a couple of items that have been fun for the last couple of weeks. Had an opportunity to go listen to a fantastically talented group of bus drivers, produce an amazing musical that taught me everything I needed to know about riding on a bus. It was a lot of fun, and it was very impressive. I, I think that, uh, when you walk up and you have people telling you that, you know, we've made this presentation to, you know, 2,500 students, um, that's a, that's pretty cool. So definitely hats off and thanks to all the folks who are participating in that. Also had an opportunity to be part, a participant in, in Westerville's Long-Term Planning Event. Stopped off at the American Legion on the last day and had some great conversations with our colleagues and peers in city council. And a couple of things that were interesting, we discussed an idea that we've been floating here, which is opportunity for deeper working sessions, um, much further down in the collective staffs of each of our organizations, some cross-pollination opportunities. The members of city council that I spoke to were very positive about that possibility. And I think also some discussions about, you know, some areas where we can possibly reopen, things like some traffic studies that haven't been done in a while, speaking specifically about schools like Westerville North and where, you know, kid foot traffic really is. It's not necessarily where the sidewalks are. And, uh, and again, the city council and, uh, and city manager were very receptive to those ideas. You know, so I think, um, you know, our next step, obviously, as a board, is to, to help create those opportunities and, uh, and, and create those connections because I think we have a willing and receptive audience. And, uh, and we're gonna do nothing but create a stronger community by capitalizing on it. So a lot of fun, and it's interesting to see the city going through its long-term strategic planning because we've gotta start some of our own here for our next five-year capital plan. And there's a definite possibility for us to kind of work together with the city as they're beginning their planning process as well for that longer-term 20-year period.
I have a couple, so bear with me. First, I wanted to update everyone that Cindy Crowe was named Central Region Ohio School Board Association Outstanding Board Member, and we are all very excited about this. It's a very prestigious award, and when I called Alan, her husband, he was thrilled. He was really thrilled. He was very moved. So thank you. Secondly, our district is hosting a flu vaccination clinic, and it's gonna take place this week on the 10th and the 11th at all of our schools, as well as the Early Learning Center and Transportation. If you haven't filled out a form yet and had it signed that your child wants to participate, please do so. 7:00 PM on Wednesday, September 10th, at Central High School, there will be a seminar, Internet and Social Media Safety. I think this is so important for our parents to intend, and everyone's invited. They're gonna have two police officers there, one from Westerville, one from Genoa. So if you have time, please go and check it out. November 8th, Westerville Education Challenge will host, host their annual Boots and Barbecue. And this year, we're gonna add the Buckeyes since that is the biggest game of the season. I'm being told over and over. So please mark your calendars.
You had to be told?
Yeah. Well, I know, I was thinking that, too. Secondly, I would like to say a big thank you to Westerville Partners for Education. What a fantastic group. I don't know if the public knows, but they partner with Kiwanis and do a book program. They do Books for Breaks. They just recently did a book Bonanza, and they get books in the hands of kids. They also level them if you care about AR reading. It, just fantastic, the volunteers that are going on there. Also, they are going to launch a Tuesday lunchtime tutoring program at Point View Elementary School. So, um, lots of good things coming from that group, and thank you. Which brings me to our volunteer policy. And I was going to ask, Dr. Kellogg, can you please tell us a little bit about it? Because I keep hearing about it, and I know, but I would like the public to hear firsthand. Thank you.
The, the intent of the policy is to ensure that, um, people we bring in to work with students, that, that the adults that are with students are appropriately vetted to make sure that, um, uh, that the kids are safe, bottom line. And so the past practice in the district had gotten loose in regard to criminal background checks for volunteers. And so as we've implemented the policy and tried to gain amongst administrators and teachers who are at that next level, shared understanding of when someone has to be level one, which is easy, versus a level two, which is a, a bit more scrutiny, I think sometimes we tripped over ourselves and our understanding what that is. And it comes from concern from staff members that they don't want to put kids or the school district in harm's way if we make a mistake. So that level-two piece with the criminal background check is intended to be for those circumstances in which an adult, not a, not a district employee, is, uh, gonna have a high probability of being, uh, with one or fewer children unsupervised by any other staff member. And you can think about those kinds of conditions in your worst nightmare, right? As a board member, as an administrator, or as a teacher, or as a, as a parent. And so the, the judgment question of when does someone have to be level two or when can they be level one is oftentimes a struggle for people. And when they're trying to do what they think is in the best interest of supporting the policy, it can sometimes, we can sometimes trip on ourselves. So we're gonna continue, in fact, we've been meeting with all of our administrators this week. We can continue to talk in terms of what that might look like. I think the, the, the difficult point is from my mouth to principals' ears to then teachers who are oftentimes making the field trip decisions, et cetera, and what they're communicating to parents is where I think sometimes we're, we're losing ground. So we're gonna try and put together some materials to clarify that, work with staff to continue to clarify that. The other one is, we're gonna look at the, um, the fee for criminal background checks that are currently put to, uh, the individuals and see if we can't do something internally to help with the cost of the fee so that there's less of an equity issue for individuals. Bottom line is, the slowdown in the bottleneck of it comes when someone has, should be level two and has to go through the criminal background check, the BCI check, because that involves a fingerprinting, involves a couple of days delay, and involves making an appointment here to get it done. And that's when the bottleneck can occur. So to our staff who may or may not listen to me when I'm speaking from here, what I'd encourage us to do is be well thought out in our planning about activities and think in terms of, might I need level two? Maybe I had that discussion with my principal or my principal with my executive director. So I make that determination early enough so that I can communicate that to people. But there's some simple workarounds. If you put two adults with a large number of kids, you're more likely to just need a level-one person. And indeed, you, if it's a teacher and a parent, that parent doesn't have to be level two, can be level one. So we have to think a little more strategically about how we assign our volunteers and what we're doing. At the end point in which I think you really, really need level two is if you've got an adult working in isolation or away from other staff. And I would present to anyone that that's a scenario we probably don't wanna put together anyway, just 'cause misunderstandings can happen. So we're always better with several adults, a bunch of kids, and, and possibilities of misunderstandings or mistakes unless that could happen. So, A, we need to communicate better internally about what the expectations are. We need to plan better as a team to communicate. And we need to facilitate and make it easier for people who do wanna be level two or have to be level two to make that happen and maybe ease some of the financial burden. So we're gonna continue working on the implementation of that. And to those who've been frustrated or, or, or have dealt with some of that, apologies. We'll try and get it better. But at the end of the day, it's really about protecting kids and protecting adults in those kinds of circumstances.
Right. I'm not gonna add anything to any of that because, well, no, I will say one thing. Thanks, John. This is very important. Thank you very much for taking care of the needs that we have around that policy. All right. Dates, times, and locations of next meetings. We will meet in regular session on Monday, September 22nd, and also on October 13th, both at 6 o'clock, and both here at the Early Learning Center at 936 East Wind Drive. Could I have a motion for adjournment, please?
So moved.
Thank you. And a second? Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Thank you. With motion and a second, Bart, would you call the roll?
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Dr. French?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes, we are adjourned.